Good evening, everyone. Would you stand for a moment? We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Lindgren?
Yes. Let us pray. Everlasting Creator, we thank you for this time that we get to come together to discuss the welfare of our village. May tonight be a productive one. May we all find a common ground so that we can thrive together. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. At least the sun's shining. That's a good thing.
Yeah.
We don't see that long much around here. Okay. First thing we'll go into is the organizational meeting.
So your appointments?
Yep. Your appointments. You gonna read them off or?
I guess.
Yep. Please.
Okay. The following appointments are to fulfill the duties of Deputy Mayor Richard Doye, Clerk Treasurer Jody Brown, Deputy Clerk Treasurer Samantha Brunner, DPW Superintendent Ernest Smith, Jr., Police Chief Joseph DeDazio, Building Inspector Joshua Morgan, Code Enforcement Official Joshua Morgan, Flood Plane Manager Joshua Morgan, Help Officer Dr. Michael Freeman, Attorney David Merzig, Historian Walton Historical Society, Budget Officer Jody Brown, Tax Collector Jody Brown, Register of Vital Statistics Jody Brown, Deputy Register Samantha Brunner, Our Financial Institutions Wayne Bank, National Bank of Delhi, and Community Bank, The Media, The Reporter, Daily Star, and WDLA.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for reading it.
Yep.
Next, public input. If there's anyone here that would like to have some time for public input, now would be the time.
The WTPA has another proposal out here. We'll give you a copy of all of that. What we've, and we've talked to Josh about it, what we would like to do at the bottom of the stairs that go down to the basement is put a wall in on the right-hand side and a door to close that off. And the reason for that is we've had youngsters get down into the basement, and we'd like to prevent that from happening.
Could be a problem.
Yeah. And the other thing is, is one of the things we noticed was there's a draft that comes up from there in the wintertime, comes into the dressing room. So we just think it'll make everything much more pleasant and also secure the area.
We want to take one.
If you wanted.
Appreciate it.
So that is our request for extending the construction that we originally proposed and did a diagram of. So Steeplank is fine with that, and we just wanted to get your approval for that. And then Jim has three other items that the theater needs that are outside of the construction situation.
The first one on here is ADA, Americans with Disability Act has changed a lot since divisional bathrooms were put in for the theater going public. And the original sinks are about twice the size that are in there now that could be put in and still meet the ADA requirements. We wish to install smaller sinks to give us room to install baby changing stations in both bathrooms, and we will supply appropriate receptacles and signage that says no wipes in the pipes. And that's something that we're not going to do tomorrow, but we're going to get it done in the next two or three months. We have a lot of families that would, that attend the movies and events, and we just feel that that would certainly make the theater more hospitable for them. The next one down the list is health and safety oriented. We wish to purchase an automatic external defibrillator, and we're looking into ones that match one, that matches what the local fire and rescue squads use. And it'll be installed in the lobby, and we will offer training to anyone interested, and we'll supply all the consumables and updates and certificates that are necessary on a yearly basis. And the third one is we're planning a cellar cleanout day this coming Saturday, and we need your permission to park a dumpster in the Opera Avenue parking lot from Friday morning till Monday morning. Insurance certificate, Jody, you may have already gotten that. We're supposed to mail it to you.
I haven't seen it yet.
From Hugson and Benson. And so that's been requested, and we would need what is help to mark that off and put barriers in place so that the carting company can put that dumpster there, and it won't be there for a week. It'll be just there for the, for the weekend. So those are the three things that I would like you to act upon, and the one that Sandy did. Be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah. And Jody, I was just going to say, we can follow up with our insurance agency to just make sure that they get that.
Because we don't have a copy. I thought, I was looking for a copy. I didn't know if you said you were going to give it to me, but, or you might.
They were supposed to mail it to you. I'll call tomorrow and make sure that they, they've got it done.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all four of these. Second, as, as, as the.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Carry.
Thank you. Stop and look at the dressing rooms. Wait behind that door. They're looking great.
They're not all there yet.
Oh, no.
Be surprised by the lighting. The lighting is phenomenal. You can actually see it.
Hmm.
So why don't you have come and appraised the building to see if the WTPA will purchase it?
Can we, can we take that up at another time?
Okay.
Yeah. But, but put it in the back of your mind, please, if you would.
I feel some pressure.
Wow.
No, no.
You know, we have also because of the court, we're getting a lot of pressure because of the court. We're not ADA compliant at all, and we've been really getting a lot of pressure. And the only other alternative would be to put some kind of elevator, and that's, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. Then the maintenance afterwards would be, so it's just something we were thinking about. So we'll talk another time, but kind of keep it in back of your mind.
Maybe we should have a casual conversation.
Drinks?
A ca, was that a casual?
Over a martini.
Over a martini. That's a casual conversation. Yeah. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the, all the effort and everything you do over there. I, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
We've got a good committee that's really.
Well, yeah, you seem like you have an active.
Anxious to work on things, yep.
It's, it's one thing to have a committee, it's another thing to have an anxious committee that wants to do things, and that's great.
I shouldn't say the whole committee, but most of it.
Well, most of it, but you, but you know what? Most places are like that nowadays. I'm in the Lions Club, and I've been Lions Club for 25 years, and we can hardly get anybody that want to volunteer to do anything anymore. And it's, and it's all the org, it's not just one, it's all the organizations, so it's.
Can I go home now?
Why?
You said you couldn't get anyone to volunteer.
You want to go home? But yeah, but thank you again for all you do. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Abstracts. I'm hoping everybody had a chance to look at the abstracts. If there's no changes or anything you want, we'll need a motion.
Make the motion to approve.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Code of enforcement. Mr. Mo, Josh.
Good evening. Everybody got my report? So things are starting to get more active. Anybody have any questions with it? We had two structured fires in the village, unfortunately, last month, last week.
What's the latest? Are they going to rebuild? Well, you still don't know yet.
So Mead Street, still unsure. I did contact one of the owners there, and the family was going to do some more talking. Trip Ave, I talked with the property owner today, and it's, it's a total loss.
Really?
Yeah. He probably won't rebuild there. So, yep. Yep.
It's a little tight in there.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's, it's pretty, it's tight in there, and.
You can even play Legos on Trip Ave.
Right. So, yep. And that's that. Anybody have any questions with anything that has to deal with that?
I do. There's a que, there's a letter from a resident about a snow.
Oh, I was going to read that one.
Removal violation.
I got it right here. I was going to read that. Let me, let me read the letter first. We've got to take care of it now. To whom it may concern, I am writing regarding a bill I received in the mail regarding snow removal on 12423. I am enclosing some photographs showing that at 5:49 a.m. I saw a cat that already plowed by Jordan Wood. I have also attached his information if you need to speak to him. I would like you to review all this information and remove my bill from your account, please. If you have any questions, please call me at. Thank you for your time in this matter. Sincerely, Kimberly Jacob. Now.
Well, so my question was, we have a picture of the Griswold Street side of the property that shows that the snow was still there at 11:30 in the morning.
Two days after the event.
Okay. So did, did she not see the photo?
She didn't see the photo.
Okay. Because her letter is talking about the other side. Is that Union Street?
That's, East Street.
East Street. So it's apples and oranges.
Correct. And she didn't get fined or charged for a corner lot. She got charged for a straight lot.
Straight lot?
Yep.
So with that information, in light of that situation, I, I would make a motion that we keep that fine in force.
Yep.
You need a second on that?
Motion of, it's to keep or no action.
No action. We don't have to, we just take no action.
Follow code.
Okay. Then I make a motion, I withdraw my previous motion, and I make a motion that we take no action.
Second. You have a second on that?
Second.
All favor? Aye.
Who's second then? Because there were like three.
I think Eric.
Eric did.
I'll give it to Dick.
Give it to Dick. What a sport. Give it to Dick.
And the other thing that I had was, I believe last month you guys started reviewing, like, some preliminary on upping some of the fees on our building permit fees schedule. We've been pretty cheap on a lot of things. I work in other districts that are up there quite a bit. This is kind of in the middle of everything. And then I also researched other municipalities that are around us, and some of them are quite high, but a lot of our fees were kind of down there a little bit, so. And then I wanted to add a few other fees, like generators, solar, plumbing, because sometimes there's some plumbing that happens, like next door. We had a sewer main that was replaced that was still involved, but yet, you know, it takes inspections, and, you know, it's $35. Decks, I kind of felt there's a lot of work that goes into decks, and a lot of them in the area are quite small on these homes. And I think the minimum fee on that was $35 before, so I just wanted to up it. There's quite a few inspections that go into that. And additions, same thing. There's a lot that goes into that, just like building another home. And the minimum fee on that was, you know, it was quite low. So that was the only thing that I was looking at, so.
We had discussed it before, before Josh was actually here, and we understood that some of our fees were low. Now, I don't, does that require change in village code, or?
No.
So we could just.
Her code, it's by board.
I'd make a motion, then, that we accept the fees as presented by the Code of Sports Officer.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, we're still good. We're still going to be the one rollovers on the run.
Right, right.
But we've got to bring it up to.
Yep, yep, yep. These are just gentle increments, and as time goes on, other things are going to be coming around too, especially with code changes and stuff, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Bill?
Hello. Hello. I don't think I have anything formal to ask for tonight. Just, I guess, a couple of quick project updates. I and I study, we, we talked about that at the last board meeting, and I wanted to get together with the sewer committee and the board as a whole to talk about where we wanted to be in applying for funding through that track. Switching gears a little bit, but on the water project, it's been out there for a little bit. The village have been awarded funding to go towards water system upgrades. The plans are put together for that. They're up at the Health Department. They indicated to us that they're hoping to have the approvals in place this month, so hoping next month to be coming to the board asking to go to bid with the, the water project, which will be water, replacing water mains, upgrades at the tanks, and upgrades at the one wellhouse. So that's something that we look to get in place this year, something that construction may roll into next year, because there's still some pretty long lead times on some of the parts and pieces and equipment that'll go into the project, so.
What happens if that's like way over what we think it's going to be?
Then we, I mean, I guess there are two options. My expectation is we probably have to scale it back some and not be able to do as much water line. There obviously have been a lot of price increases in, in construction. Anybody that's been to the lumberyard or anywhere has seen that. The, the project has been in place for several years, so we have, you know, some budget in there for contingency, but not 50, 60% contingency, like we've seen in some, you know, construction markets, so.
So you know which ones are areas would be worse than others that we could concentrate on, right?
You have to, you know, work, work with Bush and see where we could scale back. I mean, you, you can usually get more loan with these projects, but then more loan is more debt service, is more a bigger payment you have to make, so. My expectation is we'd probably be looking to scale things back to the extent we can to stay within budget if, if needed. We already have the project broken up into kind of two parts, a base bid, which is our, our higher priority areas, and then we have several bid alternates that if budgets came in low, we could add that work. So it all depends, you know, we try to be flexible with our, our timing and, you know, working with contractors to try to, you know, get as many bids in as we can when we go to bid.
So you, yes, you have the flexibility to scale back, but you don't have the flexibility to go under what the committed bond is?
Um, you, within a few percent. I mean, most of the projects don't close it. You know, this is based on $2 million. Exact amount of the project might be exactly like $2 million, you know, but they, you can't, like, cut it in half and, and only do, you know, $1 million after you decide you were going to do a, a $2 million project. So, you know, within a few percent, but not, not, you know, way, way under. So we'll, we'll put it out to bid, and, you know, right now we're just speculating, so we will put it out to bid and see where, see where numbers come in, and then we can have a better conversation about where, where it makes sense to go.
Okay.
We, we do, we should be seeing some activity on the, the current, also on the water side, on the Currywell project. The drillers under contract. I've been trading paperwork back and forth with the Health Department there. I believe the drillers out, Friday, Friday. Friday to do kind of initial walkthrough. They're looking at mid-month this, this month, now in April, to come out and start the well drilling process, so they'll, they'll pump the hole in the ground, we'll do pump tests and water quality tests, and pending the results of those.
And hope, right.
And we did the initial test well. Things looked good there. That's what allowed us to go to this next phase, so we do this round of testing, and then pending the outcome of that, we then submit plans to the Health Department to connect it to our water system and use that as a source. So it's progressing.
Will this now be one of our biggest water supplies?
That's our goal. I mean, the, the one we're replacing, it used, it was initially permitted for 500 gallons a minute. It doesn't, you know, maybe half that.
Now we're down to like 195.
Yeah.
So we're trying to get back to that.
Can we get back, does it have the, look like it has enough that we can get back to that 600 or close to it? Yeah? Good.
That's, that's the goal with it.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll do this round of testing, and then we have to submit documentation to the Health Department, and then there'll be some back and forth and maybe some other regulatory involvement, so it's, it's a process to get a new, DEC's involved, the DOH is involved, there's another agency or two that folks their head in on this kind of stuff, so. We'll work through that process. I guess the only other update, just on, on the Highway Garage, we have a few punch list items to work through with the general contractor. I know the DPW Superintendent and his team have been working through on that project as well, so.
A little update on the I and I thing. I, as you know, I'm on the Coalition Watershed Towns.
Yeah.
I, I brought it up to them, because they were talking, but they heard that the city wanted to help out with the plants that they run.
Yeah. Markerville and Grand Gorge, and there's two or three others.
Yeah, and I, I think four or five of the other. And I said, "That's not good enough." I said, "Because we need the help also."
Then you can do the whole watershed.
Yeah, you could do it. And so I also went to the CWC. Tomorrow, we got to, they have their annual meeting. I'm going in tomorrow.
Okay.
I gave that report that you gave us, the 3.3 million, to Jason Millen.
Okay.
To present to them. And I said, "You need to present it to them, show them what we're talking about. We're not talking about little.
Yeah, nickels and dimes.
This is, this is major stuff."
Right.
So, and then we had a meeting last Friday with the city to go out and different things, and I also brought it up there too about it, so I.
I don't think it does.
I don't think I made a lot of friends, but I wanted everybody to know that we have a problem.
Well, what happens in the case where they own the other?
What they want to do, the city wants to do, if they, if they own the plant, they want to come in and take care of all the I and I, take care of it.
Oh.
And I said, "Sure, it's great." I said, "We got part of the biggest plant in, in, in the watershed."
Hudson.
You know, and I said, "How about us?" I said, "Don't you," and I said to her, I said, "Don't you, you realize that, of course, that water all comes in there, goes right out into the river?" So I says, "So if you don't feel it's that important, then maybe I'll just tell them not to treat it, and just let it go in. What do we got to lose?" And they all gave me a look like, "What are you talking?" And I said, "Well, that's the point. We need help." So I think I made my point.
It's not a new, unique problem. It is, you know, across the board, and I think in the, the facilities where the DEP owns the plant, I think in some, at least in some of those cases, they own the collection systems too.
Yeah.
So this is, you know, here, that's kind of the divide. They, you know, fund things at, at the back half of the wastewater plant, and they say the collection system is, is yours. You know, in some cases, they own the collection system, so that's, that's where the I and I comes from.
Well, I was talking to one of the guys in the DEP, and I said, "Do you ever hear the term, you get more with honey than with vinegar?" I said, "So you, you want to do things around it?" I said, "We're the biggest community in the watershed. I, I would suggest that you think very hard about it."
They, they fund a facility over in Ulster County, building of that, portion of that system. The one in Pine Hill, I think. In the area, down closer to Ushore.
Never Sink or something. It might be Never Sink. Somewhere that way.
Cannsville's right in our backyard.
Yes.
So it's like.
Yeah, it should, it should be a priority. I agree.
What would we do if they came and said to us they want to take it?
Take it over, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, I said that. I, I did say that. I said, "By the way, I said, you took over another. I've got a nice big plant you want to take over." Whoa, no. Well, I just then helped us out.
So would then, then the water sewer bill still be collected and paid to them?
I, I don't know. I don't, how do they work that out? I, I don't know. That'll be my next question.
I think it's, I mean, they're, they act as a, you know, here, the, in the village, the municipality owns the utility, and you charge your residents, but, you know, there's other utilities. You have Nicig Utilities, you have phone bills and stuff like that. So there are private, you know, areas where there's private water systems, private sewer systems, and that private company sets rates and, and does things, and they're, when it's a private entity, they're overseen by the Public Service Commission. Like, you know, Nicig and, you know, Frontier and all the.
Because it's essentially a not-for-profit.
Right.
They would have to show that whatever they're billing for is what they're spending.
Right.
But that doesn't mean, we wouldn't have any influence over the rates. If that's, if that's what your question is, we wouldn't have any.
Right.
Other than you can turn your water off and not run into it.
So, I mean, we still have to pay.
The residents would have to pay.
Right, right.
The village, the village wouldn't be responsible for the dollars in their.
Yeah, those capital improvement projects.
See, that's the other side of it, because they could raise and raise and do a lot of things that the region wouldn't do either, so. But I will keep, I've been, the last few weeks and months, I've been really hitting it hard with it, and so they kind of look, like, anybody else got anything to say, they all look at me and they, "Yep, and here I am, let's do the I and I thing we have." So I keep saying it, sooner or later, somebody's going to do something. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Shane?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody get my report?
Yep.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions? No purchases.
That's why I didn't say anything.
We, we do have a non-potable pump that quit working. We've contacted the company, but they've got to come look at it, so hopefully that'll be in order for next month.
Okay.
But other than that, the DEP and the DEC both did inspections last month, and they were okay.
That's good. Thank you. Great job.
That's all I have.
I love your question going with lactose. I mean, they, they were shut down, so there wasn't anything this past week, but I mean.
Correct.
When you find, just suddenly things apply, and you call them, do they, they know anything about it?
No, they haven't responded a lot lately.
They don't respond much.
Aren't we supposed to talk about that?
No, we're not supposed to talk about that.
It was just a question. Who was the talker?
So we got good report cards?
Yeah, we got a good report card. We had no violations this month, last month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you.
Junior? I had a, I couldn't wait to say that, because it said.
Junior.
Well, is it junior?
Yeah, this is true.
Yeah, this is true. The second.
Well, you can call your second, huh? That's good.
Everybody get my report? Any questions, prayers, or concerns?
Prayers or concerns? Yeah, that's a good one. Where you gonna turn those?
Do we need a pothole maker?
We do.
I'm gonna fix it.
Yeah.
How much do they cost?
About 75 grand.
We really need one. We need a curb maker.
We do need a curb maker, I agree. Absolutely.
Those are $75,000, too.
You wish.
Yeah. The curb, the curb maker, they were...
Probably a couple hundred.
Couple hundred, I actually looked into it.
Yep.
Have you heard anything more from Westlake?
I have not.
They haven't replied?
Nope, I told them what the deal was, either tear them out or they pay for half of it. And she said, "Okay, she'll let them know." I haven't heard nothing back since then.
That's the God railing?
Yep, yep, yep.
If they don't respond, then...
We had a couple water leaks we had to take care of. Our telemetry upgrade has been completed, and it's working great. Kinda nice. We got questions.
Water level's rising?
Yeah, yep, sometimes. Sometimes it keeps dropping. So, that's working very well. The shop project's coming along good. So, now, we're just hoping for spring to get here. We have stuff on Auctions International too that's doing pretty...
How are we doing on that?
We're doing pretty well. That auction ends Thursday night.
Is it going better than you thought, or is it just...
So far, it's just kinda on, on course.
Of course, what you thought.
Yep. Speaking of Auctions International, I would like permission to sell the water telemetry stuff we removed. It's older, but somebody may be able to use it or use parts. So, maybe it's about trying to put that on there and see if we can get something out of it instead of just hauling it to the scrapyard.
Do you want to sell?
That's all I got right now.
Can you make a motion for that? I'd make a motion, if you'll, I'll put yourself a telemetry officer. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
And we have our spring water conference coming up. It should be in May sometime over in Sydney. I don't have the date yet. And there's four of us possibly going, so I'd like just maybe the permission to do that. Usually what happens is they send us a notification like the week after our board meeting.
Yeah.
So, this year, maybe we can get ahead of the time.
Is that no fee?
No, it's usually about $35 each.
So, you need a motion on that?
Yep.
Make the motion, we authorize the training.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
All right. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. Chief?
Have we got my report right? Twice?
Twice, yeah.
Good. The only thing I really have this month is a couple of trainings that are coming up. Delhi PD's hosting a active shooter training at the fire training building in Hampden. The cost is $50 for active participants, so I'd like to get at least two or three of our officers involved in that. If that's a possibility, it's, they're actually looking for other role players too, like bad guys and victims, volunteer victims and stuff like that. So, I think it's an important, reality-based kind of, you know, it's the real kind of thing.
Can I motion for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you tell us when that is?
Yeah, it's, did I? It is April 29th, Saturday. It's at, it starts at 9:00 in the morning, it goes till 4:00 in the afternoon. I anticipate I'll be there between providing coverage and going back and forth, so... But I'd like to have three, three of our, yeah, three of our officers involved in that. The other training up in May, looking for a field training officer school, DCGS allows the officer to take a new recruit from the academy, sign up on their last 160 hours of training to be processed to a police officer. Right now, Devon's hardly full-time FTO, so I was wondering if I could get, Katie is eligible this year, Officer Mitchell, and Zach Finch to go to that school. It's $250 per student, it's a four-day school. May 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th are the days for that. And I think the 23rd is a half a day, and the other three days are full days in Delhi.
Make the motion to approve the training request?
Second? All in favor? Post.
How much per person?
250.
That's really all I got tonight for, I have something for executive session.
Okay. The camps, uh, not camps, the...
The body camps.
Body camps.
Yes.
Are they state bid, or is this, because we need, we're supposed to have two, by regulations, supposed to have two bids on everything.
Okay.
Unless, unless this is a state-bid item.
I can ask the representative if it is a state bid.
Because if it is, then we're fine. Otherwise, we gotta have, we're supposed to have another bid.
Another quote for that, okay.
I forgot to mention that, that was my, my...
Okay, all right.
So, if you could just double-check on that?
Okay. Yep, I will do that. I'll get back to you tomorrow with that.
Okay. And the other thing, I guess I'll bring it up, but as far as the car, the new car?
Yep.
We had a quote on it?
Yes.
To do it, it's gonna wait, what, four, five months before we can get it done?
Three or four more months, yep. I haven't talked to the owner of the company yet, he was out sick, so I talked to one of the managers up there.
The point, I'm trying, we're supposed to have two bids on that as well.
Okay.
We, I had reached out to K, KBG...
KJVL.
KJVL, and we're gonna be getting a quote on them too.
Okay.
So, I'm just...
You're right, that's fine.
So, I just wanted to let you know about that.
Okay, yep.
On that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, James.
All right, you're welcome.
All right, we'll go, we'll start with the trustee reports, we'll start with Nate's.
Letter in the phone, we gotta, gotta add it to the report. There we go. All right, well, Austin Ligon Park is, you know, gearing up for, gearing up for summer, so we're getting ready to go with our basketball and our arts and crafts and the pool. And we've been having a real issue lately with, I made a video last month, you know, asking people to please pick up their, their dogs' droppings. And lately, people have been bagging the droppings, but have been leaving them where they bagged them up, which is just as problematic as just leaving them. So, we appreciate people bagging their droppings, but we really need them to throw them into one of our receptacles down there. We have trash cans, we also have a dumpster, so please pick up after you pets. Dogs need to be on a leash, they can't, they can't just be running around. At the theater, the Green Room Project is coming along nicely. They just spoke with us earlier, earlier about that. We've got Dungeons and Dragons through April 12th at the theater. The Coffee House this month, presented by Music on the Delaware, is Barn Paint Blue, and that's Sunday, April 16th, free show from 6:00 to 8:00 in the Andrea Paternoster Room. The main stage concert this month, also presented by Music on the Delaware, is Horseshoe Lounge Boys, performing original and traditional, backwoods, Americana, and hillbilly music. And that's Saturday, April 29th at 7:30 PM. We also have a classic flicks this month at the theater, Singin' in the Rain, starring Gene Kelly, Donald O'Connor, and Debbie Reynolds. And that's Thursday, April 20th at 7:00 PM. Been in touch with Donna Wood, and she's been telling me about her Girl Scout troop, who would like to raise money to build a dog park somewhere in the village. And we've been having a hard time trying to find a place to put it. But they, they wanted to possibly come in and talk to us this month, and they weren't able to make it tonight, but Donna sent me a letter. In looking at the late, the Take Action Project that the girls are looking into for their Silver Award, they're considering the idea of creating a dog park for Walton residents. They have identified the issues of people using the Little League field to let their dogs run as a problem, as often one cannot always fully pick up dog poop in that area. They see people using it because dogs need to be able to run to exert energy. But in the village, there's, there is currently no safe area that people can exercise their dogs like this off-leash. The girls are currently researching and seeking out a safe location that is accessible to people of all abilities, and where it may be convenient or safe to make a fenced-in location that dogs and owners can use. They are researching various municipal parks created, and what would be needed for a project of this magnitude. I think that by May fir, by May 1st, the girls will be able to have a clear picture of possible ideas and how they can bring their project to life. They also know that they will need input, input from experts on several levels to make this project work. So, we're still, we're still working on trying to find just the right location, and we'll look into it further. And I guess that's what I have for today.
Thank you. Eric?
All right. Well, as Butch mentioned, the telemetry system, that being replaced, that system that was replaced, very archaic. So, this helps streamline a lot of processes there, the water system, the monitoring, to scaling down calls, and just making it more efficient. So, it's great news that that system is working. In addition to that, I don't have anything other than just to say, you know, I'm thankful for support in this last election, and looking forward to continuing to serve, so...
Thank you. Dick?
Uh, no, I have nothing other than what Chief had to offer.
Okay. Steve?
I was just gonna say that we passed our inspections.
Which is good.
Yeah.
Always good.
Something positive.
Yeah. Okay, Mayor's report. I'm gonna reiterate what Eric said, I wanna thank everybody that came out and voted, who would be stuck with me for another three years. So, anyway, I'll try and complete a lot of the projects that we've started. I know I keep talking about the bowling alley, and the pizza area, and Dunkin' Donuts and all that, but everything is, is still doing good. I talked to the pizza guy the other day, he said he's hoping by the middle of April, be open. And the bowling alley, not, not far from him, so... So, we'll see. You know, it all depends on stuff that they get and how they're doing, but everything is still moving good, that's why I want everybody to know. Next, the unpaid water sewer and unpaid AR voices levy, 23, 24 taxes.
Dick, were you gonna, were you gonna talk about that?
Yeah, I've got it here.
Okay. Did you wanna do that, like, now?
We can do that.
Yeah, 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 I got that.
One of these has got it on it. Anyway, yes, we have to change the, the exemptions for, uh...
Senior?
Low-income seniors. The information we're giving the first time was a little bit out of date. Now, we have to have a public hearing on this duty. So, I would make a motion that with these changes, we're gonna have to have a public hearing. We need to have it by, what, before the end of the, before the tax year rate duty, so we have to do it, or it doesn't make any difference then.
It's not gonna affect us this year?
Yeah, we can do it in May.
So, we can do it, we can do it, it's May?
May 1st.
May 1st, yeah.
Okay, we'll do it then. Can I make a motion, did we do that?
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Now, you wanna do the...
Yeah, that's unpaid water bills?
We submitted a list of all the unpaid water and sewer bills and the unpaid snow removal, lawn care, and inspections, um, per village code, we can levy those to the coming tax bill. So, I just would like a motion to go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.